I think there were a couple. There were a couple deficiencies I would call them that they had to handle in businesses downtown. They don't tell us who and that's fine, but um and then I think. I don't think that included any Foodwagon because they don't operate this time of the year, so. And then the other thing was, oh, just general information and it's kind of interesting that we talked about. They had a lot of animal bites, including from a skunk and cats and stuff like that, so. Uh, you know, those animals, like every time I let my dogs out at night, I look first. It simply be, you know, you gotta make sure there's not something out there that dogs don't want to find, so. Anyway, that's uh, I could just see that happening, somebody walking around the corner of a house and having a skunk bite them, so. Anyway, that was, that was interesting. Um, other than that, that's about it.
That is interesting.
Airport meets uh, the sixth at Panetapha, which is Winston.
You guys are all gonna have big time reports next time.
I'll give you a report.
So we had on um, uh, October twenty second, we had a Central Montana Foundation meeting. And the big thing, which everybody knows, it's been in the newspaper and stuff, is that Osburnson had kind of finished up the cancer by not only finishing it up, but also being able to add some of the things on there that they had cut from the budget originally. And then he did some matching stuff. But he also has uh, distributed some money to just Winifred in general. And it has run that through the Central Montana Foundation, which really helps the, the, the foundation itself. But um, Winifred Educational Endowment, the Winifred Stockyards, the Lutheran Church of Winifred, and then some building endowments that he's done for uh, Winifred as well. So all those have come through. You know, he's just such a generous person in, when it comes to rebuilding and looking in uh, not only Winifred, but he's been very uh, just in Central Montana in general. Um, grant requests, we gave some money to uh, for some technology stuff to the Geyser Daycare. They have a daycare in Geyser. And they wanted some kind of place, technology play stuff for their kids, and so we thought for that. And then the big one that we did was for Lewistown Eagles Manor, um, four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars uh, to do some stuff um, on the interior, like in their lobby and just kind of some entrance stuff and updating for uh, them. So that was kind of the thing we did. Um, Lewistown Parks and Rec had put one in, we need just more information on it, so we're working on getting that one to them. Um, and our next meeting is November twenty sixth. So uh, the foundation is very, very healthy right now, I will say. So we are looking at giving quite a bit of money away in May.
Oh wow.
We're uh, we're pretty excited about it, so it's uh, it's gone from, just since I've been on there, you know, it was a I think, when I started, it was thirty-five million at the foundation. And then last year, it was like forty-five million, and now with the Osburnson stuff, we, we moved up to, you know, like eighty-five million. So it's high or something here in Central Montana, so. It's a fun board to be on, I enjoy it. Alright. City Manager Report.
Um, I did not have a manager report.
Okay. Alright. Well, we've learned everything we need to know in the last two hours of the season. Public comment, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Anything that's not on the agenda, you can speak about now. Sir.
Michael Brown, the owner of the sign shop, former, he's been signing. And uh, I had sent out an email to the board, or I'm not sure if I had a copy of it, man, was expressing concerns on what I consider is some items that should be really routine in sign ordinance. And that's a matter of, of signs in kind, which that word refers to a sign that hasn't changed size or a style, whether it's a hard sign, stays a hard sign, illuminated sign stays illuminated sign. They're just refurbishing, or maybe they just took the rebrand and the logo was going on, or they just said that we made it look better. It's deteriorated with weather and time. We get lots of these sign requests to fix up the original sign. Not necessarily change anything, or maybe it's a little bit spooking out. And what it is right now, the policy of the ordinance is you touch it, you pay. That's pretty much condensed what it means. If you do anything on that sign, you're gonna pay a fee. And there's been some problems deciding what's been used old and, and when I bring in uh, requests and typically I bring it in with pictures of what the sign was, what the sign's gonna be at least, and then the size, dimensions and all of that. And on the signs that don't change in size, there's really not much to decide, except what, how big is the sign? Would it be charged with a permit? Below, um, the size of it, basically four by eight sign, which is thirty-two square feet, will be about twenty bucks. That amount's been kind of inconsistent, but now with Doug being there and staying right at that above, the thirty-two square feet has been a hundred dollars. And as long as it's in kind, any new sign, any sign that's over elevated, that's illuminated, that's cha- that's changing, there's changes on the signs, then that will go through the review process, especially if it's over thirty-two square feet. That process is taking some time, because whenever the board appels to be. Now, the sign ordinance you have came out of Bozeman, is where I found out, that's where it originated at. It was adopted, I don't know if any change was made, but in Bozeman, it can take up to six months to get a sign. We don't want to get involved, that's just causing a lot of complication, a lot of issues that are unnecessary. Especially with the in-kind signs. In-kind signs, it used to be a one-day process, I'd walk in, or maybe two days, the next day I'd have the permit back, would be good to go. In my business, weather, temperature, all of that is, is critical to what I'm doing. When I'm putting up a sign, I may have uh, limited access to help, so I've got that day that I can use my help. And I can't put the request until the, the proof's been totally approved. And so the sign design's complete, and then I go ahead and turn the permit in. And it's a weather, wind issue, and that's a lot of the time it's wind. When you have a large sign and you've got fifteen mile an hour wind or more, it's a kite. And if you don't have enough people to handle it, hold it, then it becomes a real problem. So we have to make our applications, when the temperature's right, it'd be too hot, maybe it'd be too cold, maybe it'd be too windy. So we need to move when the window opportunity offers itself. And so time-wise, we need to have it happen relatively quick. And that's, and I'm referring to an in-kind sign, there's a new sign that requires some review, obviously, we have to allow for that because that has to be approved. Now, sort of, in-kind sign, it shouldn't be an issue, I'll give you an example of one that we just did. It was uh, the double Dr. Orly's office. I can't think of the, like Danny's a first name, but it's Arandy. But anyway, it's a, they're gonna be chiropractic and a licensed practitioner in this office. And the sign hasn't changed as far as size. In fact, we got a little mountains on the top, which took off some of the corners, the square footage is exactly the same. And the sign on the side of the building, and so there's no change there. And we put in the request, um, I was told uh, that go ahead and start taking down the old sign, get ready. And I said, okay, good. Well, it was one of those days where I had uh, there was no wind, and I had somebody available to help me. But I only had him that evening, and so I just went ahead and put the sign up. And we put it up, and afterwards Doug contacted me and said, well, it, it caused problems for him, it's like five hundred and twenty dollars, which is the cost of the permit. So they basically fined me in the cost of the permit. And that was an in-kind sign, that's a sign that just had to be rebranded, same size sign rebranded. That should have been simply a twenty dollar fee, or if they can't, the square footage is two sides, it should have been a hundred dollar fee. And that's it, it should have been something easily decided in one day. And that would be uh, when they come to the, to the front desk, Doug didn't have to deal with it, it was just up off his desk. Holly didn't have to deal with it, the people in the office, as long as they've got pictures before and after the lockup, they should see, okay, we'll see what's good fees, what is the square footage, just pay the fee and go ahead and get them. And that's how it should, it should be that simple. Speaker, uh, Sport, or uh, Sports Inc., we just put up, we're partway through that process. We put up a sign on the outside and it went up because it happened, well, that day that we put it up, but all the investors were showing up. It was a rebranding process, and they showed up, they took them a whole month to decide on the design. So I had very little time left to get that sign up. So once I got the back of the picture, we went and put up the sign exactly the same size, it looks different because we completely stayed, we changed the logo. And use an existing logo they've got. But as far as the sign change on it, it really isn't, other than the look, it's actually much cleaner. And so we've approved the design of this there, and we moved the clutter off the sign, there'll be addresses below it and the names of the two leasing, leasing companies that'll be in that building, the leasing property. And so that was an in-kind sign, and again, it should have been very simple, very straightforward. And uh, as far as having to wait for in-kind permits, it is, or charging extra, or in a case where it's a rebrand, or a repainting, or a simple change, or refurbishing, to charge more or have excessive time is almost penalizing the customer's business's intent. We want to back up businesses or town, we want them to be successful. And so when they're doing something to promote business, we should do whatever we can, with the exception of big new signs, something changing, all of that, the most significant of the process, the sign is taken in kind and they just wanna make it look nicer than, than that should be really, kind of a no-brainer going through. And so um, the email I sent kind of explains into detail, I had some suggestions on, on what the fees were. In some cases, there may be no fees. It's a real simple change, or I mean, some guys changing their parking sign, it's out of the building and there's nothing to change. And it's, it's uh, just simply being cleaned up and, and redone. Anything like that is a plus to the, to the businesses. They, they, if you add costs, that's like taxing, it's essentially the, the same thing. And if you don't add costs, in those cases, it's a plus to the business, they appreciate that, it's a sign good well, the commission started doing that. This ordinance has been kind of a thorn inside, a lot of people were not happy with it when I put it. I wasn't, I happen to be working away on an Atlas, I didn't know the details, but I heard from a lot of people that it was not supported by the community. They were opposition to it, especially the professionals that deal with the business. And it wasn't because uh, they didn't want to pay the money, it's because it was making the whole situation far too complex. Now, I understand, we don't want to be Las Vegas, out of control, we don't want, but we don't want to be Bozeman either, super complex ordinances that take a long time to process. Lewistown is a town where things should be handled fairly simply, and all of the businesses I deal with when I do a sign, they understand that, and they're not opposed to paying a fee, but the, the process should be simple, so we should just kind of move right through it. As far as the, as long as it isn't a brand-new sign, requires some review, and that part of it's up to me to make sure you have the information you need to take a look at that, you see it's gonna be a good-looking sign, it's within the ordinance, this is my responsibility to read the ordinance, this is why I know the standards within that. But when it gets to the point of saying, stuff be showing font sizes and things like that, that's going beyond what it used to be. It doesn't even get that complicated. I'm a graphic professional, I've been doing it all my life, and I know it looks good and I know it doesn't. So it's a matter of the company, of the businesses putting it in, this is what they want, this is what they look like. So if you're like Sports Inc. saying, okay, here's our logo, and suddenly says, I don't like the logo. Well, it's their company, it's their logo, and, and that's what we should work with what we've got. We shouldn't be critical of the artwork, if that's the, the image they're trying to portray that company. That's not the job of the commission or the ordinance, is to control the design. It's to control sizes, um, not make it too garish, so it doesn't, it doesn't distract, too bright, so you can't see driving down the street at night, um, or, or a whole side of the building, it's never the same. You know, you wanna keep it simple, you wanna keep it uh, clean and neat, and so the town has to track the look when you drive through. I think that's all I got to say. And I think that, I, I think something the board should consider, is a revamping, basically a simple language change was always what it would take to address this, it isn't completely undoing the ordinance. And we don't want to open it up, we've got every, everybody coming and saying, well, I want this changed, and I want this changed. I'm just focusing on the in-kind signs that have been rebranded, repainted, refurbished, that the size has not changed, no side of it changed. And that we should keep simple, it's easy on the office, it's easy on Doug, and that's, that's the percentage of all.
Thank you. Um, so we received uh, your email, I'm assuming everyone can, and then Holly sent out the sign ordinance so that we had that, so that we could look at it and stuff. To, to change ordinances, we've been kind of working through it as a small committee, um, reviewing some of these ordinances. And then also, it takes three?
It's two readings and goes into effect, or thirty days after the second reading, and so it's a sixty-day process.
Yeah, so it's at least a sixty-day process to kind of go, go over these ordinances and make any sort of changes in them, just.
Do I get a copy? So I know that my copy's up to date.
Yeah, it's the same one as twenty nineteen, I have a copy though, you can take with you if you'd like.
Okay, and we're just following Montana code annotated, and I.
Uh, this is a city code, and so it's very similar to.
I know the code, I'm talking back to the take sixty days.
Oh yeah, correct, ordinance changes.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we hear you, thank you for coming tonight, um, we also want your email. And um, I think that we'll have a chance, our ordinance committee, to, to look at that and kind of see those small changes, if that's something that. I know that one that went into effect was for a commissioner, but I know that one of the things that they were addressing at the time was lighted signs, like. And I know you're not talking about lighted signs, but that was, that was something that was really looked at when that ordinance went into effect. Because remember that team docs put that big sign up?
Yeah, that's what prompted a big review. Commissioner Robertson has sat on the design review committee for years and years, and so he was part of that and would be able to provide some kind of background there. I too was, I mean, it was twenty nineteen, so it wasn't that long ago. The thirty-two square feet came directly out of our old code, uh, which was done in ninety-nine. The same fees, you know, that twenty dollars was in the code back then, things like that. So uh, we looked at several different codes and came up with um, something that we thought would work for Lewistown. Did several meetings with contractors, um, and did, you know, a pretty lengthy process trying to figure out how workable the code was for the community.
But we can definitely. Well, we, yeah, we've definitely looked at ordinances again after, you know, something might not work. So uh, appreciate you coming tonight, and then that's something that we will kind of work on in the future here, the next little bit. Because we have a couple ordinances we're gonna go over, yeah, so.
When did that sixty-day review process start?
Um, once we get the.
It's, okay, what you stand by, am I speaking? Sixty-day review process, it can be up to ninety days.
Or you haven't started?
We haven't started it.
Yeah, this is for the ordinance, if we were to change the ordinance in any way.
Correct, it's not specific to your permit, correct.
It's not an automatic review of the ordinance or automatic change?
Correct, if we choose to go forward, it would take the first reading, which is the start of that sixty-day window. And we would have a second meeting, um, and as long as that went through, then that would be your second hearing. And then thirty days upon that second hearing would be, um, when it went into effect, any ordinance change.
So yeah, just to give you kind of a heads up on the process of it, how it would work, but now that it's brought to our attention, address it, for sure. Thank you. Is there any other public comments on agenda items?
There's a cop, you can, you're welcome to that copy too.
Yeah, she put the copy on the end of the table.
Yeah, it's on the web, it's on the website, all the city codes.
Yes, yeah, this one, it's new enough, it has not been updated on the codification website, but it is available online.
Alright, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, is there anyone who would like to talk about that? Are there any questions on the consent agenda? One of these?
It's a little smaller, quite a pool this time. I think that we approved the um, the consent agenda, the all comments that have been paid from October eighteen to October thirty-first of this year for a total of forty thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Move by Commissioner Day, second by Commissioner Hewitt. Is there any comments on the public? Comments from agenda, or from the commission? On this agenda? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Alright, moving on to the. Other action items, discussion and action on resolution number four one seven six. Resolution approving an application from Reese Townsend for additional TIP funds. Holly?
Um, yes, um, so several years ago, um, Mr. Townsend applied for a TIP grant. He owns the property at uh, four twenty-first Avenue South. And at that time was demolishing the existing structure to make way for a new building. And so the TIP board awarded him ten thousand dollars, which was their maximum uh, grant amount at that point to help with the demolition of the property. And uh, since that time, they have obviously increased um, their grants, and uh, he has come back. And so this time, he is asking for an additional ten thousand dollars that would help offset some of the construction costs of this new building, um, and those costs included windows and siding for that same building.
This is the building that's going up kind of by um, Montalod or whatever.
Yeah, on, kind of dentistry, right adjacent there. Currently uh, not all the way, the, not all the way complete, but most of it's at least stood in a structure.
Is it a residential or?
Uh, it's a commercial structure. So he, the proposed use is a making shop, I think, for himself, and then he will have a small retail suite providing firearm service and general mechanical maintenance of firearms, I believe, out of application.
What does gun sales mean?
Guns, firearms.
Yes, so that's, that's all included in that one? I think it, I'm sure it's two separate buildings?
Nope, it's just one little building, it is a two-story, it has upstairs.
It's a new shop that we have, right?
So he has already received ten thousand dollars from TIP, he's asking for ten thousand more. And this has been approved by the TIP board, do you have any comments on it?
I'll approve it, it's a straightforward, good approval within the district.
Siding and new windows, yeah?
New siding, windows, new building, good taxable structure, it's TIP perfectly. I would say, you know, we're gonna see another one that is somebody coming back. It's because the TIP had, the funding was there to go beyond ten thousand dollars for applicants to twenty. So they've got to come back and ask for additional funding uh, to get to that twenty thousand dollar maximum. The twenty thousand dollar maximum is, just so you know, kind of a soft maximum, I would call it. This commission can always say that there's a project worth, worthy of something much greater than that, for instance. But that's what the TIP board typically does, is maximize it to twenty thousand dollars. Stated property help?
Yes, yep, some public projects or with a huge uh, public benefit haven't exceeded that.
So the cost, the twenty twenty-one was the original demo, they did on the building, and this is offsetting with those costs?
No, this is an additional ten thousand dollars for the new building.
It's a new building.
That's all of this.
Yes, did I miss if the TIP board approved?
It's approved.
Okay, yeah. And um, again, you have, I mean, he had roughly twenty-five thousand into the demolition cost from back in twenty twenty-one. The new costs are estimated at ten thousand, and then the additional hundred and fifty thousand. So it far exceeds the required match.
And he's uh, using his specifically for windows and siding and just put this on. Move to approve resolution four one seventy-six. Okay, so move by Commissioner Speaker, second by Commissioner Hewitt. Is there any comments, comments from the public?
It was up to seven thousand, four thousand.
For first.
Any comments from the commission? We'll do, we'll call votes.
Resolu-, okay, resolution number four one seven six, resolution approving an application from Reese Townsend for additional TIP funds. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we have another one, discussion and action on resolution number four one seven seven, resolution approving an application from Jane Bowen for additional TIP funds made to Lewistown, taxi, and financing, Holly?
Again, this is a great example of that public-private partnership, where originally uh, these guys came to us um, to do siding. Of course, it makes a lot of sense to do windows prior to your siding. And because of that grant, they had um, some additional funds that could be used to improve the structure. And so that's what you see tonight, is the window installation and purchase. They are then going to maximize um, that twenty thousand dollars. And uh, again, it does clearly meet the, the one-to-one match, and uh, was approved at the TIP, at the TIP board level as well.
We've already approved these ten thousand.
It was thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five, they took a couple of these.
So we're maxing out.
So, so let me explain it maybe a little bit more of this. When, when an applicant comes in, they can't, uh, they can only get a matching grant up to, basically, in this case, the siding project was only so, such a size that they could only really get ten thousand dollars. And so when they started the project, or were about to begin the project, looked at it and said, wait a minute, we could do windows while we're doing the siding, it's not as expensive as we thought. They decided to go ahead and do that, came back to the TIP board and said, hey, we now are doing a big enough project that we could justify a twenty thousand dollar grant instead of ten, can we get an additional ten? To max it out, get to this one, that's what this is. It still makes the same sense as the first project, in, from our perspective as a board, that, that board was pretty straightforward, it is a residential, a reunit, I would.
Unit of commercial building.
Residential building, different private residence, in that it's a commercial, or a commercial building.
Says it's a triplex. Housing?
Housing.
Housing. And again, we, we've already approved the thirteen, whatever it was, given to them, so.
I'll move that we approve resolution number four one seven seven, a resolution approving an application from Jane from Jane Bowen for the additional TIP funds. Do I need to specify the note in that motion?
It doesn't have a note. Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Day, second by Commissioner Bueller to approve resolution number four one seven seven. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from commissioners? We'll call votes.
Uh, we are approving resolution number four one seven seven, Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, I'm now going to open the public hearing to hear the comments on resolution number four one seven eight, which is a resolution amending the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the city of Lewistown. We were handing out some information on this, we'll call it, would you please go over this?
Yes, um, so in front of you, you have uh, a budget amendment resolution, and on the back, you have basically what it did to our one cheater. And so, line by line, again, um, we cannot expend funds that haven't been appropriated. And uh, so in looking at the budget, um, and after the auditors were here and closed out our budget, there were some things that needed to be addressed, uh, and then some projects that weren't even contemplated at the time of budget. The first one uh, is the multipurpose building at the pool. So this is the snack shaft, the locker rooms. Again, this is a partnership between the Lewistown Ice Skating Association, the swim team, the front of the pool, the Fergus County Rec District, and the city of Lewistown. And so this project was uh, not discussed at budget time, not um, planned. And so uh, in consultation with our auditor, and the county consulting with their auditor, it was decided that this would be the best process. And so you'll see that uh, the recreation district, which is housed by Fergus County, has already committed up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue uh, for the project. And uh, we feel that that's a fairly realistic uh, budget for materials um, for the construction. And so uh, you'll see that that is put in the general fund as well, in a construction account. And so those are the two expenditures. Again, the process is that we, this, we, the city will pay that, it goes on our depreciation schedule, so we depreciate it down, it goes on our insurance, things like that. And so it's an asset to the city of Lewis Town. So that's why it's housed in us, some of our smaller projects, we did not run this way. It was a one-time expense, and so the county just sets a check for those. But that's why we reached out this time, this is a little different than the past projects. And so we will pay those bills, submit an invoice to the county for reimbursement. And that's how it will be processed. The second item is our ARCA fund allocation. And so this is the guaranteed allocation that we already have. And so that shows up in the 2292 account that has been on our budget. And so when our auditors were here, at the end of the year, they were closing our fiscal year, there was $198,924.55 that was spent previously that they wanted the ARCA funds to cover. It was part of our wastewater project. And so they moved to those funds, thus the account was negative. And so that's what this is. Again, the money had already been spent. It was shown in the sewer fund and not in the ARCA fund.
Correct. The expense was in the sewer fund.
And so this does not change anything. As you can see on the page, the second page of this, it's actually six-three, of the exhibit, the net position doesn't change. We can't spend money we don't have. And you'll hear more about that. And then the third item is our permit health levy. Again, we have a budget for a mail allocation. What we can mail is the $190,309.15. We did have a balance carried forward from previous years. And, but we can only mail that amount. And so you'll see that that is the correction here. So the net change in that is that $1,834.79 will remain, if collected through the taxing process, will remain as cash remaining.
Because that comes, that was basically left over from previous year.
And then section four is the wastewater project. So we all know that in October, we awarded the wastewater improvement project. And did not budget that because it was prior to, or our budget was done prior to that award. And so the city received $2,083,000 roughly dollars in competitive ARCA funds for the wastewater project.
Well, who, who wrote the grant for that then? Was it our engineers?
Correct. Pasha did the competitive.
Okay.
So we did a competitive water and a competitive wastewater for that. And then our direct allocation, the city commission in 2021 decided to utilize those funds for our direct allocation for the wastewater project as well. So that balance of our ARCA fund is also offsetting the cost. And so the difference in what we had in competitive funds and the construction of the project, which was just over two and a half million dollars, that, so the difference is $496,000. That money will come directly out of the sewer revenues. And so that's probably the biggest change that you'll see to the budget. And so the sewer budget that you approved, it's the 5310 accounts, the bottom line on this spreadsheet, that was approved, had an available cash that didn't change, of $662,000 in change. And then the proposed revenues did change because we had to put in the grant, the competitive grant. And so it went from 2.1 million to 4.2 million. So it went up by that much. And then the proposed expenditures went from 1.4 to over 4 million. And so you'll see the wastewater project, what it added to both expenditure and revenues. And then the new numbers, if you guys approve that, what it does. And then the difference is that $496,000. And then that cash remaining for the sewer fund is still projected to be over $900,000, even after that $496,000 comes out.
Okay, say that again, I'm sorry. The $496,000 will come out with $901,000?
No. No, after that.
That's what we'll have left is the nine.
Even after that comes out, we have over $900,000.
So I want to make sure I understand this. There was an application for the ARCA grant.
Yes.
It came in $2,083,000.
Correct.
The job came in at 2.6 million, 2.58?
Yes.
The estimate?
Yes.
The competitive estimate, competitive year, came in at 2.5. So there's a shortfall of funding, of $496,000.
Correct.
That we're gonna take out of our sewer fund.
Yes, out of the cash remaining of our sewer.
So the question I have is the $2,083,000 ARCA request should have been 2.6 million if we had enough to cover it. Is that right? Could have? Was it an underestimation by Pasha in what they asked for from ARCA?
Um, I, we maxed out our ARCA between our water and our sewer project. So we hit the max.
We couldn't ask for more.
Correct.
The project still came in $500,000 more than we had.
Correct. We did do an additive ultimate.
We're taking it out of our revenues, I'm sorry. You did add a devultimate, but we're taking it out of our revenues, really our, our.
Reserves.
Reserves for the sewer plan in the future. Is that concerning? It's too late, we're doing this, this is just a budget amendment.
Just amendment.
Is it, is that concerning?
No, we did not have a reserve. And have budgeted pretty healthily to continue making those necessary maintenance item improvements. So our goal when we did our rate setting was $200,000 to start with, and then actually double it to $400,000 on an annual basis to be set aside for capital improvements. So.
To continue build those reserves.
Build those reserves and do the required maintenance. But also on that note, that we've been paying about $200,000, $350,000, $400,000 and low, we no longer pay that. So since then, we've paid off our loans.
So it was January 1st of last year, 23?
Yeah.
So that was the first, we did this sewer rate increase, and then it went into effect in 2023. So now we actually have reserves, which we didn't.
My concern in asking this was that shortfall of $800,000 between what the engineers thought was going to take, or told you it was going to take, was actually taking in the new project. And was that just timing?
Some of them.
You've answered my question, but like, concern is that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, honestly, the saturation of the market, the construction market, has made the ARCA projects maybe not go as far as some other projects in the past. So again, it's a frustration, but it's the market. So it's what the market will bear.
I understand.
If I'm correct, didn't we receive such a large amount of those ARPAs because we were shovel-ready?
Correct.
There are a lot of other communities who petition.
Yeah, that's why we could max.
Is the, the section 21, is that revising last year's budget? Moving it from this year to last year?
Section two.
The, yeah.
Correct. So if you look at, I'm sorry, can I speak? So if you look at the Excel spreadsheet that I gave you, when we were in the budget process, I had cash available of a million 272,000. So I budgeted everything to be spent because that will be used for the sewer project we're talking about. The auditors came in and moved that money. So then when I go to put my budget into the state, I got negative cash. Can't have negative cash because they made that entry, we'd already kept our budget. So we have to do this for my budget to be proper at the state level. Do we have to re-approve last year's budget?
No.
No, it was all good because I had the money there last year, but then when I went and did it this year, when they made that entry, I didn't have enough money.
So on that, on that one though, but it's the same line item, so I don't.
Because my cash available at.
Oh, your cash available was the, oh.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah. Because there is no more money coming in for that one. We've got everything we're gonna get.
On that ARCA one.
Yep. And those invoices were previously paid.
Yeah, when does that close out there? 2292.
Uh, we have to have our ARCA projects spent by the end of 2020.
Oh, that's it?
Well, beginning of 2026.
And this was the first part of it, so we just.
This was just a little bit of the engineering.
I wouldn't be surprised if it's priced down by 230 of this next.
That part.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying too. We can close this one.
So all of our construction time has everything wrapped up by October.
So we're on, we're still in the public hearing, although we've had lots of discussion here. Is there any public fever, Richard?
That means, it didn't matter if the sewer was made over the pipe?
That's part of this money that we're, but when we increased the sewer a year ago, that's some of the money that's being spent here.
Okay, there will be any new.
No, no, we're not doing any new, no more increases.
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't have incremental increase.
The incremental increase that we had done originally.
Right.
It's not.
Over, over five years.
It's a quarter and, and 50 cents are the two numbers.
Quarter and 50 cents. Quarter.
Quarter on base.
Quarter on base and 50 cents on usage.
50 cents. And then we end a quarter. Somebody tipped my, a couple of my housekeepers in the gold.
Dollar coins.
The dollar coins. Like a big stack of them.
So when it's the pool season for concessions, we get a lot, like kids write their piggy banks or their parents' piggy banks?
Like 50 cents.
Dollars.
Anyway, any other questions, any other comments on this for the, the public hearing? Part of it? Will, is it clear as mud?
Oh, it's fresh.
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate this being laid out like this because I did not realize in this amendment that the snack shack was in there. I didn't know that that money was.
We just found out on. And that's the general fund, right?
Correct. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, we can discuss and before with the motion, if it's interesting to anyone on Resolution number 4178. Is there any other questions on it? Comments you guys want, you and me? I don't have anymore. Does anybody else have any questions? We usually do budget amendments, I mean, this is not anything, it was just a little surprising amount. We brought it in there first day.
Full of grants and unanticipated expenses are the biggest thing. So we did, we're lucky enough to get grants, there might be another one.
I motion to approve Resolution 4178.
Second. So it's been moved by Fisher Robertson, second by Fisher Hewitt. Is there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, we'll call votes.
We're approving Resolution number 4178. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, so.
I have a question. Are these working? I turn it on and then the light comes on, and then after a while, it goes off. Are they still working?
No, you'll have to turn it back on again.
How about yours?
Yours is still on.
And you hear mine?
The lights are staying on too?
Yeah.
Mine turned off. Okay, we'll, we'll change batteries for next time.
Aye.
But I can, I can hear you, I can hear you.
Very good, thank you, I make sure of that.
Okay, so discussion in action on approving another resolution, number 4179. And this is an intent to propose the closure, closure of the city clerk's office, including Public Works, on December 24th, three years, 2024, 2025, and 2026. Could you give us a little background on this because I asked on this one for just like what previous commissions have done?
And so.
For this reason of three years.
There is a state law that requires the central business office of government, the city clerk only, be open. And so if we choose to close it, then we have to go through this process, which is a very public process. And so past commissions, again, we're asking for, we, or Christmas Eve, again, the way the years fall, we don't always need to ask you guys because, you know, they're on the weekend and different things. The previous commissions thought it was a lot of work for us to come back every year and ask. And so that is why we have three years, we're not stuck on three years. But what we're asking is that if we go ahead and approve this in the end, that we make it available to our staff if they elect to use a vacation day that day, that we can be closed. If they don't want to, even if one of them does not want to, then the office would remain. It's just an option. So that is that.
To take vacation.
Take vacation.
Think so, it's against their rule?
It is not a holiday.
Correct.
You're allowing everybody to take vacation at once.
Correct.
And the office to be closed if everybody wants.
What did you do last year?
Uh, last year, it was on.
It was on a Monday.
A Monday.
And so we.
And the, it was on Sunday and the holiday was on Monday.
Yeah.
And so this year, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Correct.
And the way it falls, I mean, if the holiday is on Saturday, we observe it on Friday. And that's why you'll never see us ask for a Friday or a Monday, just the way that they try.
So back in 2014 and 2015, just to give you some history, we did do a bit. We did it in 14, I did this process. And then in 15, I did this process, and there were a couple commissioners that voted against it. It was still passed, but there was a couple commissioners that voted against because they felt it was ridiculous to come in and ask for it every year. And so then we waited like two years before we had to do it again, and we asked for three years at that time. And I didn't ask for any more at that time because again, we got into the weekend, so I didn't feel that.
Well, that's fine, I was just curious.
And other, you, as commissioners, can, you can say no and say you want to do it every year, it's strictly.
Oh, we can't have a standing that assumes we vote yes into perpetuity?
I, I say no, but lately, commission does that question.
I think the three years is good considering that will cover Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for the next year.
We're good for about six years, seven years.
Yeah.
I approve Resolution 4179.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Speaker, second by Commissioner Bueller. To approve this, it's probably a good thing, let them decide if they want to. It's Christmas, of course.
And we do notice that.
A little bit of honey.
Little bit of honey rolling down little things.
So is there any comments from the public?
I don't say whether.
Yeah, it's Christmas. Any other comments from commissioners?
And so if it's approved tonight, it comes back for official actions.
A public hearing and official action.
Oh, because of Resolution.
No, no, because it's a public process, because I can't be closed. I have to ask all this permission to be closed because I'm the clerk officer.
So then will you bring it back on November 18?
Yep. We. Trying to be prepared.
Okay, no, that's good.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, let's do a roll call again.
We are approving resolution number four-one-seven-nine, Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, discussion in action on reappointing Gary Sligel. Yeah, we just appointed him, but now we're back to three years. Why? It does. Discussion in action on reappointing Gary Sligel to an additional three-year term on the Lewestown Board of Adjustments. So can you give us a little comment on this, because Board of Adjustments is going to be dissolved.
It will be being absorbed into the planning commission. He is aware of it, but we do have matters that are currently in front of the board, they will meet later this week, in fact. Um, and so Gary is a longstanding member, I believe his first term of what was in twenty-twelve. And, um, I think he would prefer it be less than a year commitment, uh, but did agree to serve another term if it takes us that long to see the planning.
Is he interested in being on the planning commission?
It was offered up to a lot of folks, uh, he did not turn in an application, uh, but we are still accepting applications for our new planning commission.
Did entertain motion from Gary's?
And move re-appoint Gary Sligel to an additional three-year term on the Lewestown Board of Adjustments.
Certainly.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Beeler, seconded by Commissioner Rube, um, any comments from the board?
Uh, why have we, why is it one more, uh, cabinet board?
It's just being absorbed, like, we're just gonna have, there's a couple of boards that are just gonna move into one board.
I would make a pool, I mean, but, but.
But.
New board then?
Um, well, Holly just said that he just wants to serve on this board until it's dissolved.
Or the O B. No, no, the next board is, is who?
No.
Okay.
No, just, just this board. Okay. No, that's fine.
Um, we are appointing Gary Sligel to an additional three-year term to the Board of Adjustments. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye, I don't think I asked for any, uh, other comments from the commission, but simply all voted. Just gonna keep going, going forward. Sorry, your chair is a little tired. It's daily savings and I had, I took care of four of them for three days, so I'm starting to bore.
Honey's really rolling.
Um, discussion in action on reappointing Donna Stroh.
Stroh.
Stroh. To the Historic Resources Commission for an additional two-year term. Uh, Holly, I will just say that this is such a great board.
Yep, and we've got a great group of individuals. Uh, these ones do feel like we appoint all the time because they're only two-year terms, uh, but this would be Donna's third term. And she is on the museum board and, um, is a very active and great member on this board.
Oh, and so we reappoint Donna Stroh to the Historic Resource Commission for an additional two-year term.
Certainly.
It's been moved by Commissioner Day, seconded by Commissioner Rube. Um, any comments from public? Comments from commissioners this time around?
Yes.
I would like, definitely.
Yes.
Listen, I'm interested in this stuff, so I would like a list of all these commissions and who's on them. Is that something you had already got?
Already got it, yeah.
Alright, good, yeah, I'd be, I'd like.
It would be nice to know who's all on there.
You mail it out when we all want it.
So if I see them, I can thank them.
Give me your, your number when I didn't like.
That's an easy one. It was flat.
Who are? Perfect. Um, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Ron.
Ron, okay, I was right in that, thank you. Are we ready for a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, citizens' requests, are there any requests from citizens?
Citizens' request.
The three of you? Commissioners' minutes, Commissioner Speka?
I don't have any today.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Got nothing.
Um, we should, we'll put about the D E Q coming next meeting.
So the D E Q will be here as part of the committee as a whole. And so, uh, the Big Spring Watership Council came and asked for information, and I think they have everything they need, and they also provided email addresses to those uh, that weren't attended. So I'll make sure that I email them out fast and only, um, it will be a virtual attendance, I believe, um, by all of them. Um, but there will be kind of at least an update by the E Q.
So everyone's aware of that one, right? Sorry, I saw your face.
What up? What up? Um, uh, and just to loop back to last time, there hasn't been any set dates or communications with the school district about possible traffic discussions or.
I continue to try and get something set up there, so stay tuned. I was, I.
Can you see female to those emails, because I haven't gotten any of those.
Um, and I did have two different, uh, people from that area reach out to me. And both of them don't have children but live in that area. And they were just concerned about when they go to work. And so they had actually moved the time that they go to work to. So they, they just happened to live in the area and they were just like.
And also a bench, I mean, because remember that GM at Lewes and Clark has also been utilized for events on the weekends and stuff. And so that's something that I know, um, someone had asked that there be a plan for that.
Yep. So there's lots to talk to them about.
So what did we just talk about?
The traffic issue at Lewes and Clark.
Got you.
Holly hasn't had a chance to meet with them yet.
Holly, maybe you can tell me why they moved the main kitchen over to the.
I wish I knew, Diana.
What was the more vehicle?
No, they don't tell you anything.
Well, now we don't feel like.
Well, they do. I asked several times on different occasions. They don't.
I think they, one of the main reasons that they moved it was to get better truck access. So they are able to back the trucks directly up to the kitchen, so that they can give the meals to the other school more efficiently. That's one of the reasons. Not a very.
Ovens. People, that's a big oven.
There you go.
Okay, any other comments on school district stuff? Anything on school district? How about you, you got any minutes?
Well, I just wanted to know if you could, you or you give me, like, just allow us like a breakdown of what's happening, we met to review the ordinances. And there's point coming up if you're going to hit the public.
Uh, so we are advertising for the angle parking, we're gonna discuss that at the next meeting. Angle parking on Third Avenue.
Oh, no.
And so we'll revisit that, uh, at the eighteenth, and it will be in the newspaper.
In the newspaper, there'll be a box in the newspaper.
And, and we'll post it in some strategic locations and make sure the bank and those other interested parties are aware.
So that, will that be a public hearing?
Uh, not a public hearing, but it'll be a public discussion. It doesn't warrant like the full legal section.
Okay.
But, um, we're advertising it and doing that higher level.
To be able to hear more public comment on the.
Correct, it is gathering public comments.
Okay.
So it'll mostly be just a discussion then.
Okay.
And then the other ones Tyler was working on.
So we'll continue to meet on those until.
Once he has something drafted, I will email them out so you have time to review it, and we'll set up another meeting.
And just to let, I thought about this before the meeting, so thanks for bringing it up, but, um, for you commissioners, uh, one, we talked about, so Ron and I and Lorraine and Holly met and Tyler. Um, and we talked about the ankle parking, and we're gonna have some public comment and then hopefully change that eventually. And then the other thing we talked about was the dogs at large and.
Parking in general.
Parking in general.
Tranch. Campers.
Oh, yeah, campers and RVs, which. And so, and like moving them or, you know, whoever first is the date that they can no longer be like parked in the street and. Um, and what we're doing, or what Tyler proposed is that what we'll kind of look at them as, um, public nuisance and safety stuff. Because they are city streets and putting that kind of stuff on the street, it makes it hard for traffic and all that kind of stuff. So he's, he's got a little plan, and then also dogs at large being a, a safety thing as well, so cut down on those like dog bites. And, um, also all the dogs that just run around.
Well, and the trash is, I mean, right now, the amount of certified letters, and then they have thirty days, and it, it is a very lengthy process. And so it's very difficult to get things started and completed in kind of the summer season. And so, uh, it does breed a lot of neighborhood disputes and just discontent all around. Uh, because people perceive it as not, things aren't happening, uh, but we have to, by code, give people certain timelines, so looking at amending some of those.
Yes, of the timelines on when they have to get rid of. And one of the examples that had come up was that somebody had like their trash or, or trash bag or whatever that then the dogs got into, that are running around. It's just a never ending, but, um, in the alley. And so then vehicles couldn't go up the alley because there was all this trash, like, had been spread out in the alley. And then the neighbors complained and, you know, then it takes them thirty days to clean it up, and so there was, so maybe tightening those timelines a little bit, so like it's four days to get it cleaned up instead of seven, thirty or whatever, so. So we did discuss that, and I did think about that before the meeting, I kind of forgot that. So we're working on those ordinances and we'll throw this sign one in there.
Sort of like what Mr. Burn talked about, it just takes a long time.
Yeah. Great. Do you have a minute?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Diana, do you have a minute?
How's the fence?
Um, so after the last conversation, Tyler was going to check on the.
I was going to call him, and I didn't, didn't, because.
Yeah, I have not had a chance to catch up or hear more about that.
Ah, should I call?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, sign ordinance.
Yes.
I've addressed that.
Let's do it.
I didn't want you to do an argument with the constitution, uh, but I would say this, I've been out, I was on the board, designing the board. And first thing we did was review the sign ordinance. And we looked at many different entity sign ordinances, not just Bosman. Bosman might have been borrowed from, but there were many cities looked at.
Well, that was a pretty.
It was an expensive process.
I was gonna say, that was quite a process when you guys.
And, and there was very little opposition when it was put in place. I don't know, I was a businessman and I had a background in design, my first career. Um, and we were very careful in that ordinance, we do not dictate design in terms of graphic design in that ordinance. Not sure where that came from. Uh, in-kind signs are reviewed because many of our signs are out of compliance from the get-go, and so in interest of fairness to all businesses having the same signs basically within code, they're all reviewed for compliance, that's the importance of it. And I would just speak as a business person, having a schedule to meet and understanding the laws and how you meet those laws is part of being a business. That fell on deaf ears for me. I don't think that the committee should take that up and review it, it's a pretty fresh ordinance, it's worked very well over the years. It's the first time it's been complained about, and I know it was on the heels of someone who did not follow the ordinance repeatedly.
Um.
We've, we have had a number, just so you know, a number, three or four, one or maybe? Um, reviews of signs that are already put in place against city court. So there's a repeated violation of let's go put the sign up and ask for forgiveness, not permission. And it's frustrating when that happens because as sign or designer duty members, we don't like to be bad people, but we are seeing vendors put up signs, not just this gentleman necessarily, but vendors coming to town and putting signs up and say, hooks. I guess we did it. So it's a, it's a problem that is growing in the last year.
Well, you have a bit increased construction, the only thing I would say to have the, is possibly the, the timeline of. I'm not necessarily like going against the code or, or even looking at the code as, as the design part, but more like, what, what exactly is the timeline?
I wrote myself a note to check the timeline, so, uh, we date stamped everything and we're seated, so we know when he paid for it, when it was deemed complete. And this one, these permits require no notification or public hearings or things like that. And so, uh, the planner is on that board as well as three members, so it's not that difficult to get a firm of three. And so they're turning them around fairly quickly, I don't know that any time, two weeks.
In-kind signs of that nature that already meet the code dimensions, conventions, don't get reviewed by the design committee.
Only signs that are bigger than thirty-two square feet go to the board and require that higher level of scrutiny.
I, I suspect that the desire that we were hearing might be one of rubber stamping it if it's the same size.
I think that's what he was.
And, and that.
And, and to have it immediately.
Yes.
So when he comes in to get a per, the permit, it's immediately done.
What is happening is he's coming in, it's done, my staff is trying to help him, he's putting my staff in a bad position because they don't know what to do. Because he's already done the sign, it's already done.
And then he wants.
So.
And then he walks.
So he's.
Yeah.
Way to go, I put that term.
It's a formation, that's a difference.
But it's a, it's a, a city business, I respect that he's a city business, but he's not following the rules, doesn't like the way the rules were, wants the rule changed, so he doesn't have to follow the rule. And the rule is there to protect everybody, the signs are a big deal on Main Street and in our community. And we've got a lot of pushback with people, do something that's not appropriate.
Well, I just remember when docs put up their big signs.
We had to have.
We had multiple meetings over that.
Or remember the Calvert sign in the library?
Oh, man.
That was a very hot button issue for a long time.
With the state too, seemed to like it either.
And I think if you read the sign ordinance, it's worked very well, it's fallen through the lens.
Yeah, this is.
It's not difficult.
First time I've ever really heard of it. I know that when we did the sandwich board signs, that was kind of an issue, but they have permits for those too, right?
Correct, and it's more of an education than anything.
So is it also the fee that? I don't think the fee was.
It's more the.
I think it was more like.
Processing.
Yeah, and he's like Nicky's saying, he's, people might be putting up signs or, and like, putting up the signs and then coming in for the permit, because.
Or putting up a fence.
Right. All these structures.
Can't put up a six-foot fence?
Only for a date.
I do get though the thought that it's the same thing, it should be fast and certainly, but out of date, it needs to like, you have to review a date that comply now.
I think, is it seven days?
I don't think it's that long.
It's, it's.
It's not like sixty-eight.
It's reasonable.
No.
I don't think it's reasonable for anyone walking into the per, the, the, the office, city office, to expect that moment to get approval on something of that nature when that person has been in the office. So what are they supposed to do, there, there needs to be some or thought into how long it takes to get it cleaned up, right? I mean, nobody's walking in and saying, I need a new sign by four o'clock today. Now how?
Uh, it's my half a ball, you know what?
So the only thing, I think, um, I, I totally hear what you're saying, I just, I think the only, the only review on that is the, the timely. And if it's seven days, I mean, that's more than reasonable, that would be the only.
I don't know that it's extended to fourteen days ever. I mean, I'm not aware of anything that's struck out that long.
Yeah.
Uh, normally, and in these cases, they're already up before the application.
That's what I'm saying, like, I think that would be the only thing to review is the, the time part of it, just like we did on the, other than that. If it's worse, this is the first time. If it's worth, this is the first time, I mean, have you ever gotten complaints on this?
And when, I mean.
I think Harry's seen complaints from the design review committee. That has stopped them from putting signs up, finding them, do something about it when they put a sign up, it's not going through the process.
Which is what happened because he was paying a hundred fifty dollars. And I, I actually don't think that, that seemed to, I'm not quite sure what he wanted.
He doesn't want to pay and he wants to approve that day. That, both of the two things, he won't, he's very frustrated when staff says we're going to have a review.
But it's like, okay.
Not even buying, just find a planner, just to walk into his office, have it reviewed and let him know the next day. He doesn't want that.
He wants it right there.
Yeah.
Well, he, he, he was saying the wind and the rain and, yeah, it, it all and his health, well, he.
As I said, scheduling.
Everybody has to work with what they're given.
Lewiston. You know, when we walk outside, was it last evening?
Is it snowing?
Yeah, last evening we walked out and his brain went two inches.
It was raining when I came in.
Oh, now you're scared. It'll be snow by morning.
Yeah.
Alright, is there anything else for the good of the order? I appreciate your insight on that, Mr. Designer Review Board Man. Can I refer you now?
I have a lot of problems.
It was a lot, a big lengthy process.
That was more work than the planning committee.
I remember it being really, really.
When we invited all of the sign companies, it was a full meeting.
It was a big.
Yeah, chaotic, yeah. And then right after you guys had done it, then Doc's is like, hello. Their big flash and neon sign, everyone's like, oh my god, I'm gonna drive to pizza. Well, then you had to deal with that like right off the bat.
I, there was a lot of talk of women's.
Nits, nits, and I, yes, I bought a nits and vetoed. We went out and measured Doc's sign.
I remember.
And it made it explode in my head.
Off the charts, it's like a meteor on National Anthem Christmas.
Well, you can't, I remember playing, it was so nice I could get out. I swear to god, I live on the ridge that's half a mile from that side and all of us neighbors said, the aliens are here. You can pull a line and not block, block out.
So it's like National Anthem's Christmas.
It was.
I don't know, Marco.
I'm surprised the FFA, the FFA. It was ridiculous.
It was, it was exciting.
She was shanking. It was shanking, I just heard people were like, try.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
Alright, anything else for the good of the order?
Good, good of the order.
Previous proper planning prevents problems.
Yeah, with an exclamation point. Look at you, all you're saying, I like it.
Oh, man, that's pretty awesome.